Yeah.
That was all the details.
That was the details, right there.
We wouldn't know any different.
Well, it wasn't the water main that broke.
Yes.
Yeah, what's the flood capacitor that's in?
Dilithium crystals were low.
Back to the future or whatever.
One point.
I think y'all just got to pay your bill over on that side, right?
It was Jess, he's down the line before I get there.
Oh.
Yeah, come on about 10:25.
What is that? I read them.
My dog and I were in bed. The hell with it. We jumped up, I had lights on all over the place.
I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. The first order of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I will lead us in that tonight. Come on grace, most gracious heavenly father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community that we serve, Lord. We're mindful tonight of the devastation that occurred in Tulsa over the weekend, Lord. We'd ask you to be with those that were impacted by that and by the storms, and also, Lord, we'd ask you to be with Arkansas as areas have had flash flooding and things like that over the last couple of days. We'd ask you to be with those that are impacted by that, Lord, and all the natural disasters that have occurred throughout our country, Lord. We'd ask to be with our men and women that are serving our nation overseas in defense of our country, Lord, and for our rights and liberties. We thank them for that, and we thank you and ask you to keep them safe and bring them back to their family and friends here in the United States, Lord. We'd ask you to be with us tonight as we discuss the city's business. Help us to do it in a manner of civility and wisdom, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We don't have any special guests or announcements, and the next item is the approval of the minutes of the July 17th regular meeting. Those minutes are in your packets.
Motion.
I have a motion as second to approve those minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I have seven public comment cards, but all of them relate to an item that are on the agenda tonight, so we will take those cards as we get to the item on the agenda. Next item is a financial statement. We have the June financials, and you have those in your packet, and if there's any questions, City Treasurer Timmons will take care of that. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I thought they looked good. The, I noticed we got a little handout here because I thought we were missing some general fund resolutions passed in 2017. Is the one on there talking about the 2017 HR salaries, is that the transfer that went to the fire station? Is that what that is? Okay. All right, and do we have a, did our new finance director get on board?
Well, if you look a little further down on the agenda, the mayor's going to discuss that a little later.
Okay, all right, I won't blow the surprise then. Thank you very much.
There's not any other questions on the financials. Wouldn't entertain a motion to approve?
Some move, second.
A motion second to approve the financials that's submitted. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances only.
Move.
Second.
A motion second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance number 939, the no smoking ordinance for the Mammell Center on the lake. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 939, an ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of e-cigarettes on the grounds of the Mammell Center on the lake.
Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Prior to the last meeting, the morning of that meeting, I called and had a conversation with Ms. Vogler about this particular issue, and I started to talk about it last week and discussed with her, see what her viewpoint was, but I shared with her, and then today I shared with our city attorney as well, how strongly I felt about this. I simply cannot support. An ordinance is a law. We want to make sure we understand that. That's a law. So now, the city will pass a law that the people who are members of the Senior Citizen Center will have to be, as it says in here, that if they break the law, that they can be ejected from the Mammell Center, Center Lake. I hate to hear that kind of language. I would hope that our community could do something that has more compassion, more neighborly, more convenient for everyone. We built a facility who is approximately four and a half million dollars, but we did not provide any provision for the people who are smokers. Yes, they smoke. I don't smoke, but, and I, you know, or anything else like that, but the point is, they're still good people, and they need to be at least considered, and no provisions was made in this whatsoever. So, I went to the grocery store and, you know, and came back out the other day, and got in my car, been locked up, and it was hot in that car. And I hate to tell my senior citizens that they have to go outside and go smoke in that car when it's hot, or when it's 32 degrees outside. Go put on your coat and gloves and hat and go and smoke out there. We don't have an ordinance for this building here, for City Hall. We don't have a bill, an ordinance for the community center. There's smoke platoons outside both of those, but we have one, are going to make one for there. I strongly, strongly object to this. I believe that if it ever called for an occasion for a committee, this would be it. Now, we had an occasion a few weeks ago, and it came up that, an issue came up and said, "Well, no, this is strictly administrative. You know, we are, we don't have any business being involved in this." Well, then it came back to us, and all of a sudden, we did have to vote on it. So, this is something, in my opinion, could be an incentive, a committee member, you know, and the question was asked, well, what good would a committee do? Well, we might get some of the people that smoke, to ask them, what can we do to come up with some kind of an idea to where it is a gracious kind? You know, I told her that once we vote on this, we're done, and on page two, as you will read, it says that the staff over there has to monitor this, so we're passing it on to them. Our job is done. And I would think that we could come up with some kind of little signage or something that helps little ideas where people can come up with some kind of idea, but they can enjoy it. We have gone from about 500 membership to over 1,600 or whatever the number is, but we've more than doubled. They have all they can possibly do to take care of it, and God bless their heart, they earn every thing that they get. So, I hate to put that off on them, and I know I'm sort of stirred up about it. My dad was a smoker. He died. I had emphysema. I've had several friends that had died with smoking, et cetera. I owned my own automobile detail shop for five years, and I cleaned cars and cars and cars and cars, and they're, I told the people, every time I took it back to them, you ought to, if you think this is bad, you ought to see what the inside of your lungs like, but it didn't matter. I understand. The people that want to smoke are going to smoke, but they're still good people, and they need some kind of consideration, and I just cannot see us making a law that says what they have to do. Let us have some compassion and go back and have a committee or do something to reconsider this, take a little bit of time and think about it, and see if we can do something with a little bit softer, rather than threaten people with rejection if you're caught smoking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. There's no other comments. This was on second reading. It'll be on third reading at the next council meeting. Councilmember Mosley?
What is the penalty for smoking there at Lake Willistee and the areas that are not, where you're not supposed to smoke?
It's, I think in Lake Willistee around the playground, there's a fine involved in it.
It's not Willistee, it's the playground.
It's the playground itself, around, within so many feet of the playground.
Right.
Any playground in Mammell?
Right.
Or yards.
Okay.
Right.
So actually, actually, this would be less of a penalty then, just being asked to leave, I guess.
Well, that's what this is. It's, you would be asked to leave the premises. That's what ejection means. It doesn't mean you're kicked out of the Senior Wellness Center. It means ejection from the premises.
And you're not subject to a fine, I guess.
And you're not subject to a fine.
Okay.
Now, the walking pass, the one that was passed also, that was the one is you'd be asked to leave the pathways.
Yeah, so that's similar to the...
That's similar to this one, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the sake of discussion, I just heard a comment about asking people to smoke in their cars in freezing weather or hot weather. It has become traditional in this country that we set up outdoor smoking areas, because I don't think it'd be practical to smoke inside that building. So even if you set up a smoking area somewhere on the grounds, they're going to be standing out there in the weather anyway, whether it's in their car or whether it's outside. It's still going to be hotter, it's still going to be cold, so I'm not sure where we can find a resolution to this. So, just a thought.
No, I appreciate that. My point is that I agree not to smoke inside, but we don't have to make it a critical situation to where they can smoke outside the building someplace, but make it to where it is their idea and not something that we have to use as a tool of punishment. All I'm saying is, can we be a little kinder, a little more diplomatic, a little more careful about the feelings of other people? It's almost, we're dividing two sets of people, in my opinion, the ones that smoke and the ones that don't, but they're still both good people. I would ask the council just to sort of think about it and see if there was an alternative of going a little softer and a little more gentle, but get the job done. I understand.
Thank you all. As I said, this will be on third reading at the next meeting. Under new business, the first item is tree board appointment, and we currently have two vacancies, and this will fill one of those. We have one applicant that has submitted his application to serve on the tree board. It's Mr. Jim Marino. Most of y'all think or know him. He attends a lot of meetings, but he is here tonight, and so if y'all'd like, we'd have Mr. Marino come up and just tell in his own words why he wants to be on the tree board, maybe. Okay? Set your name and address for the record.
Jim Marino, number eight, Christie Lane. I've been in the city now for almost five years, and I like it, and I'd like to keep it nice and green and maybe help out a little bit. That's basically it, or I can read this 23-page report. No, basically, I'd just like to help out on the board and see what I can do to help the city. That's basically it.
The motion to appoint Mr. Marino to the tree board.
Second.
We have a motion as second to appoint Mr. Marino to the tree board. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Marino.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for applying.
And Miss, I think Miss Nash will get you squared out. You're sitting beside her, so yeah. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 940, amending the master street plan, and the council members should have found at their seat a new ordinance that was placed in front of them, the emergency clause. Section five had been left out of that ordinance. The vote was there, but the actual section five was left out, and the plan was that this would go for three readings and have the emergency clause denied if the council so chooses. So, Madam City Clerk, if you'd read the first reading ordinance number 940?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 940, amending the master street plan for the City of Mammell, Arkansas.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to move that we suspend the rules and have our second and third reading tonight.
A motion as second to suspend the rules and have the second, third reading of ordinance number 940 tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? And for those that are not familiar with this, this is an amendment to the master street plan to allow a curb cut on Mammell Boulevard near Pine Forest Elementary. It's a, would allow greater access headed southbound only on the Boulevard. It would not be a median cut. It's only a curb cut that would allow that. And I've got a comment card on this, and so before the council votes, I think we probably want to hear from the public before we even vote on the second or third reading, if that's all right.
Sure.
Mr. Ron Schertz, if you would state your name and address for the record, Mr. Schertz.
I'm Ronald, I'm Ronald Schertz, and I live at Four Diamond Point Cove. Been here since 87, when it was only two lanes coming into Mammell. But anyway, I also sent an email to my alderman about this topic. I am strongly, I request that the city council strongly remember that Mammell Boulevard is an artery for our people to get through town. You and I both know that when we leave Mammell and we head out of Mammell and go to North Little Rock, you know what it's like. When I first moved here, there was one traffic light, and I can see it coming. Now we're at 10. But I also noticed that if we want to have more curb cuts, then we're going to have more delays on that artery that gets us to and from town. At Four Diamond Point Cove, you know I'm in Ward Four, and so I'm on the north part of the town. Typically, what I have to do is go out and Morgan exit at certain times of the day, but also do transports for the center. And I know sometimes, yes, you just stay in the right lane, take it easy, and it takes time, but it does take time to get out of town. I strongly recommend that the city council not request nor approve any additional curb cuts from Mammell Boulevard. We need to keep a path open for our residents that need to travel through our city. What do some of the people do now? Do any of you travel on Oden Boulevard North and South? Yes, I've been there around a while, and of course, it increases, and of course, they increase the speed, and I know that way back when Sam, Chief Sam, talked about, let's keep it posted at 35, because we sort of know that they'll probably go 40, 42 to 45, and I see that all the time. We have many traffic lights on Mammell Boulevard. Please, let's not add more intersections so that we possibly have more traffic lights. Now, these traffic lights, the sensors that you know that trip the lights, and the program controllers that you all set, or I understand North Little Rock controls the controllers, but we maintain the lights and the roads, be checked and made efficient for our residents. I've seen situations where drivers will stop at red lights. They'll look, don't see any cars, what am I doing here? And they'll go. They'll go through the traffic light, and they'll move on. Now, that leads to what I consider more chances for people to maybe violate, violate the rules or the laws that we have. Let's not go there. I think, for instance, as you and I know, the Blue and White Charter School brings a traffic jam to Edgewood Boulevard. It really makes it bad up here around, you know, City Hall. And I also know that the other intersections around here are affected because of that school. And of course, I know that, and I have no problem with the charter school. I even taught there myself to help them out when they had to fire a few teachers in math department. But at the same time, I'm still concerned about the traffic flow on Mammell Boulevard, and I think, to me, that's a bigger picture that we got to consider, not just the traffic situation coming out of Pine Forest Elementary and the charter school. What I might suggest is that the city council people talk to the owners of the land on and around Edgewood, Millwood Circle, where the road is not developed. Get that road through there, and so when the people come off of charter school, they can easily go up and around Millwood Circle to get to their homes versus clogging up Edgewood Drive, and of course, coming over to Millwood, you know, down, down near the Lutheran Church. Okay, we have a big school there. Yes, I know. Maybe we should have planned ahead a little bit for that. Why don't the city, then I'm also concerned about the terrain levels and the grass, and of course, I appreciate your comment, Mayor, that we do not want to make a median cut there. If you looked at that particular median, at that particular juncture, at that particular point, it'd be tremendous for them to make a curb cut to go west, or, I'm sorry, to go north. Right now, I hear you'll just come out and go east, but at the same time, that'll be a big flow of traffic. Yes, Ron, it'll be at only a certain times of the day. I work for the Department of Education. I visit all the different schools around the state. My wife teaches school. We know that schools have this problem with traffic, and what you do is you suggest to the officials of the school that they allow their students to be dismissed at different intervals, so that you don't have all this big traffic jam at one time. Hopefully, you'll consider all this, and when Ron drives through the city, I won't have to stop at all these traffic lights, or do like I do now, and go around Oden Boulevard North, which is close to my house, all the way down to Kroger on South. You know what'll happen next? We'll have traffic lights on Oden Boulevard too, because of the increase in the traffic flow. We got to consider the traffic flow through and out of Mammell, and I ask that you consider this, and I think that this particular curb set would only incur more traffic on that artery. Thank you.
Only thing I'll say there is the, this curb cut will actually keep people off of Edgewood Drive, that you're asking that we get people off of Edgewood.
No, you didn't hear me, Mayor. I'm saying the most important road in Mammell is Mammell Boulevard.
I heard that.
One of the options to get people off of Edgewood is maybe open up Millwood Circle all the way around. Now, the other option is to dismiss the students at different intervals, so that we don't have one big long line of traffic, which I see coming past City Hall, going out here on, on, on Edgewood, all the way, almost all the way down to those apartments.
But people aren't going to leave Pine Forest Elementary and use Edgewood to get to Millwood. They're not going to do that.
Why? Because maybe the school didn't develop that road structure to make them move that way?
Because they have to make a left turn onto Edgewood to get to Millwood.
Yes, right. That's, the only way you're going to get people out of there or not have that congestion, is what I'm suggesting, is that you develop other roads, and the only other road that I know of at this time is to extend Millwood Circle up north, you know, or west, I mean. Go up over the hill to Naylor Drive, and some of them can then go over onto Oden Boulevard North, or the other people continue on over toward the, what's it, Blue Mountain, I think it is called, that road over there. I do not recommend that any of the schoolchildren or cars come off of Millwood Circle, and don't get me wrong, I'm not necessarily against that particular situation. I've been here a while, and I see that this is one more step where we're going to have more congestion on Mammell Boulevard, and we need to keep Mammell Boulevard moving, and part of the, part of this situation could be done if the lights are synchronized. You and I both know if you travel Mammell Boulevard in North Little Rock, they have those lights synchronized, morning traffic and evening traffic, so that if you're leaving Mammell, you have a continuous flow, nighttime continuous flow coming back. We need to do something like that for our traffic on Mammell Boulevard, and if we don't do that, plus try to keep the traffic off of Mammell Boulevard or coming to one or two intersections instead of multiple intersections, then we have a better chance of knowing that we're going to have to stop at that traffic light, and all those cars will come out versus coming out at new curb cuts where I might hit them or we might have more accidents. And then, you know what, Mayor, eventually, some of them will want to go to the north also, and so then they're going to want to have, to go through the median, go over that ground, work it out somehow, and it probably can be done, there's no question about that, but it'll just be another intersection that we have to contend with when we're traveling to try to traverse Mammell Boulevard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schertz.
Thank you. I realize I'm keeping on pushing on that, but it's just what I see over a long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a matter of information for those people that don't know it, he just mentioned about synchronized lights. We do have an adaptive control system that is in process of being put on the Boulevard now, which is a new electronic brain that's better than the old-fashioned synchronization, and we're in hopes that it's really going to help the Boulevard, so.
The contract, we're working on the contract right now. It should start this fall, the actual work itself.
Okay, and that's, I just want to let everybody know, so.
Okay. Councilmember Vaporsen?
Just a number of thoughts. Appreciate Mr. Schertz and what he said. Those people are going to come out on the Boulevard somewhere, regardless. Second, intervals may not work at the charter school, because you've got kids from one family in three or four or five different age groups, and so a parent's going to have to pick up a kid, go home, come back and pick up a kid. It's the same location. It's not like the middle school, or it's going to create more traffic if we did intervals, I'm afraid. And then also, looking at community and economic development, what do you think that Chick-fil-A and the Sonic are going to do? They're not taking traffic down, and I, I understand the traffic situation, but that Boulevard over time is only going to get busier. I don't know, you would know better than I, but we probably have right now, how many lots do we have for sale for residences? I mean, we may have five or 600 lots for sale, or, and with the new things that are going on, but we got, you know, I'm thinking over here, Naylor and all those areas there that are...
Several hundred, yeah.
Several hundred.
Yeah.
So our, our traffic is not going to decrease, and it's something that we will have to be mindful of, and whether or not it's we in the future say we've got to lower the speed limit on the Boulevard for safety reasons, I don't know the engineering behind all that. But, but I know that we have to be mindful of the traffic, because it is going to increase over time. That's, that's just a guarantee, and as our industrial park fills up, so, and we realize that 37% of our community is retired, and they may not want to stay home from... Man, I came up there to Edgewood the other day, and I said, "Thank you, Jesus, I don't have kids in school." But, anyway, but we're going to have traffic, and we're going to have a lot more of it. So, just as Councilmember Saunders would say, point of information.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, I understand, you know, to be mindful about putting other cutouts onto the, to the Boulevard, because then it's not really a Boulevard. It's not a faster route. But if you're, what we're talking about is just a right lane only, you know, just one way to get another option, instead of having all of the traffic waiting to either go left or go right, now you have two options to go right. It's actually going to make the flow a lot faster. And people that are smarter than us have told us that, and it's not like that we just came up with this idea. We've been talking about this for several years. I know I've been on the council for several years, trying to figure out a way to make that, those, the property that's right adjacent to Pine Forest, not have so much traffic going through private property. There's other things that are going on there, and to give us a better access to the Boulevard, so that we can disperse that traffic better for the people that are actually willing to turn right and not try to turn left across there. So it still seems like the better option, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the motion is to suspend the rules and have the second and third reading, ordinance number 940. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Councilmember Mosley?
Very quick, I don't vote for emergency clauses, so I'll vote no, but I am going to vote for the curb cut. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
It's all right, we got a motion as second, yeah, so. All right, we got a motion, second, to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings in ordinance number 940. Is there any, does any more discussion on that? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Second, third reading, so we're voting.
Okay. Yes, yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Seven to one. Okay, motion passes. Madam City Clerk, if you'd have this, if you'd do the second and third reading of ordinance number 940, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 940, amending the master street plan for the City of Marmel, Arkansas. Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 940, amending the master street plan for the City of Marmel, Arkansas.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we accept ordinance 940.
Have a motion and a second to accept ordinance number 940. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Vaprazan?
Quick question. When you come off of Country Club to go, hit Marmel Boulevard to go north, we've got that curb cut there, that yield, is this gonna be about the same type of a situation? Because I'm looking at the plan here, and that's what it reminds me of. You're coming west on Country Club to hit, and by the bank there, and you turn right on Marmel Boulevard, and there's that long-
Yeah, it's gonna, you're gonna have an acceleration lane.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, if that's what you're referring to, yeah.
And the flow goes quite well there.
Right, and there will be no deceleration lane.
Right.
Because you won't be able to come off the Boulevard and turn into there, so it's only, it's a one-way to enter the Boulevard southbound. That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of one that would be a better example of that, but-
That you come out of the bank, uh, regions, and you turn right.
Right, except there's a traffic light there, and you can turn left and all that, so that's really, I mean, yes, it's very similar. It's only acceleration, but it is correct like that, so.
Is it Riverland, Riverland? We have a-
Oh, yeah, Riverland.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Riverland, yes.
Well, Riverland, yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, and, yeah, that's right. Orleans would be the other one, but they all still have, you can get off the Boulevard in there, where this one doesn't have that, so. Councilmember Williams?
When will this work begin?
Uh, hopefully tomorrow, if this gets approved. The contractor's actually on site, working on the Pine Forest Drive extension, so they're actually working on that roadway. The pipe's already laying down there, as a matter of fact.
It should be done by the time school starts.
No, it will not be done by the time school starts. That starts Monday, and so, no, it will not be done by then, but, yeah.
I want it done now.
I'm sorry, I, I wish I could, but I can't have it done by Monday, but-
You and about hundreds of other parents.
Yeah.
We have to drop one off and pick one up, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but it won't be done Monday. Hopefully, within 30 to 45 days, it might be done, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Because we still have to get the Highway Department's approval after this approval, so, yeah. Because it's a Highway Department Boulevard, or roadway. All right, have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 940. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Okay. This time, I need to request that we adopt the emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion, second, that the council adopt the emergency clause on ordinance number 940. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, if not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Emergency clause is adopted. Thank you very much. All right, next item is the first reading ordinance number 941 regarding a franchise agreement with Comcast. Madam City Clerk, if you read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 941, an ordinance authorizing Comcast of Arkansas, Inc., its successors and assigns to operate, maintain, upgrade, repair, and remove a cable system, and provide cable services through the cable system assessing a franchising fee, providing for payment thereof, describing the method of collection, and for other purposes.
Comcast came to, well, came to the city requesting that they be given a franchise agreement, and they are here tonight in the audience, so I'm gonna let them speak and explain exactly what services they are gonna provide. Ms. Parker Guest, is that correct? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, and to the council members. I am Evangeline Parker Guest, and I'm-
Write your address, please, I'm sorry, too.
Twenty-seven fourteen South Shackelford Road, Little Rock.
Thank you.
I am the External Affairs Manager for Comcast, and I have had the pleasure of spending a lot of time by email and phone with the city attorney, and it's a pleasure to meet you face to face, and speaking with the mayor to review our draft franchise agreement. Over the years, we've received various requests from business and residents of Marmel for Comcast to come to the city. And Comcast doesn't take it lightly when we request a franchise agreement. As a matter of fact, in central Arkansas, we have seven franchise agreements, and the company is over 50 years old, and I've been with the company for 19 years. So, if you approve this, it will be our eighth franchise agreement. So, I'm here because I'm a native of Arkansas, so I am the one that will have direct input and oversight over what will be done with the franchise agreement, to make sure that things are done decent and in order. As I shared with the mayor, he has my aunt with the city attorney, they both have my email, phone numbers, so they know how to get in contact with me if there are any questions, any concerns, but we want to come to Marmel to provide cable service to the city of Marmel, and it's as simple as that. And we do hope that you approve the agreement. And I do want to say, I'm, I'm fortunate to have with me Demetrius Jones, he is our Business Services Manager, so after construction is in place, it's his team that will be basically working the area.
Ms. Parker Guest, but initially, it's gonna be business customers and not residential customers, is that correct?
That is correct. We will start with business customers.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Parker Guest? Councilmember Anderson?
You said for cable service, that includes high-speed internet?
Cable, video, internet service, yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Ms. Parker Guest? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have two comment cards on this item, and the first one is from Mr. John Todd.
John Todd, 145 Orleans and Marmel. Some of y'all may know, I've had a little experience in the utility world for the past 32 years out here, and I think competition would be good. This is actually the second franchise, I didn't realize at the time, that we've had that's come before us in the last year and a half. One was with a provider that was going along the freeway from somewhere, Russellville, down south, and they wanted to come in and just service the business community. I don't believe they placed anything. This would be good if it was just over in the business community, because there's a lot less stuff over there to hit. Whenever you get into the residential side of this, it's pretty crowded in the right ways right now. And while Comcast has a lot of qualified people working for them, sometimes their contractors are in a big hurry because, you know, that's what they do. They get paid to get in and get out. You have an opportunity here with a new franchise agreement to kind of draft some of that, when can they get out, and what do they have to do, and how fast they should restore what they tear up. Because things happen. Two weeks ago, we had two contractors that were on Country Club Parkway. One was working on one side, placing cable TV. One was on the other side, placing our new water line. And the one that was on the water line side, they had the traffic narrowed down to one lane, going each direction, and then the other guys are on the one lane on each direction, and they're blocking partially one of the two lanes that were open. They hit a, a line on the golf course, a little bit further down, they hit a gas line going into a subdivision. Central Arkansas Water, their contractor, actually knocked out all the water for Salone and the quarters, and all this happened, you know, on a Friday afternoon. And they did restore it, and then they restored it again the next day, and then they restored it again the next day. So, it is not something that you can avoid, but you can be careful, and you have an opportunity here to make it kind of expensive for these franchise people if they damage something and they don't repair it in a real prompt manner. Just something to think about. You don't have to change it, competition is good. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. The other comment card I have is from Mr. Michael Chastain.
I'm Mike Chastain, 135 Fontainebleau, and Mr. Todd that spoke before is also on the board. I happen to be the president of the CCOA POA, which I believe is the largest in town. One of the nice things about Marmel, we've been here since 2000, is responsive leadership, quality of life, and ease. We have a lot of infrastructure here, a lot of convenient things, nice to go, your dentist, your doctor, a lot of places we go. And Comcast represents another evolution, and we know without, you know, when growth happens, there is some pain. What we'd like to make sure the council is aware of, and if Comcast can tell them, that'd be great, is when the residential component, if that's even in the works, becomes an issue, because we have almost 1,400 homes that would like to know that they have another choice. And as Mr. Todd spoke, it's also critically important that we coordinate well, because when something does go wrong, we get a lot of calls on the board, and we're voluntary, concern form-driven. We don't mind meaningful calls, but if you've got a snake in your garage, or you saw something that looked like a rat, there's animal control for that. But when you have your power off, or your cable down, or the water's not working, that's a bigger issue, and there's a lot of coordination when you're doing residential, that we want to make sure, to encourage Comcast to work with the boards in the city to make this as smooth as possible, and we would like to know as a board when they are planning, if they're planning, to go residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chastain. Councilmember Timmons?
I'd like to know if Comcast is thinking about putting an office in Marmel if this happens?
No. That has not been discussed yet, no, not having an office here. That is something that we would come back before you to discuss.
And Ms. Parker Guest, do you have any idea when the residential customers might be served, or is it?
I don't. My first plan of action will make sure that we get a good plan for serving the businesses, because everything here is underground, so that's a lot more detailed than what we normally do. So, we're looking at, hopefully by Q1 of 2018, having the construction in place to start selling for the businesses. And then, after we get established there, and you're happy with us, then we can look at residential. But I don't want to give you a false timeline.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Vaprazan?
I was just wondering which one, I, I mean, everybody's here, we're on video, we're on mic, and this goes up on our website. What guarantees can you give the citizens of Marmel should something occur, like John Todd just spoke of? What's your plan of action when, if something goes, you hit a line, or a cable, or a pipe, or-
Well, I, I can tell you what normally happens. Usually, if a pipe or something is hit, you would call customer service and say there's a problem. Customer service would make sure that our construction team is out there and they take care of it. If something should happen, because we're all human, then I get a phone call, probably, usually from a mayor, and I have the construction manager on speed dial, and usually within a 48-hour period, it's taken care of. So I'm your contact. I'm your line to make sure things get done.
For some people, 48 hours is a long time to be without water, or gas, or-
Well, we're not, we're not in charge of water or gas, but for cable service, and according to the agreement, it says that within seven days, we will take care of it. I take care of it within 48 hours.
Let's see, and what, the, yeah, we're talking about two or three things. The problem, the problem is, is if they hit a water line, they don't repair the water line. Central Arkansas Water repairs the water line.
Correct.
And that is who took several days to repair their own water line, was Central Arkansas Water. It was not the contractor that hit the water line.
Okay.
Okay, so, they can't be, they may hit, their contractor may hit a line, but they can't be responsible for the repair of that line. Each individual utility is responsible for that.
So we can, love you, fine.
I don't know that we can, they have a franchise agreement to be in the, the right way.
I mean, if we, if we made that part of our franchise agreement.
Then we got to make it part of every franchise agreement.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's gonna be the issue, that's typically what they're gonna come back with.
What franchise agreements do we have in the city of Marmel? Any idea? Hmm. I'm sorry.
Don't show up in there.
Well, you got, you got, Central Arkansas, well, you got the, you got gas, you got electric, you got telephone, you've got a couple of cable, three now, cable, so, half dozen, probably. Anybody that puts a utility within the city's right away is a North Rock wastewater, so has a franchise agreement, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Parker Guest.
Thank you. No worries at all.
No, sir.
Not yet.
Nice.
All right, so this is on first reading, it'll be on second reading at the next meeting, and if you're, if you think you're gonna have questions, let us know that. We actually told the Comcast representatives that normally, they need to be at the first reading and the third reading, but if they don't have to come out here on the second reading, I don't want to make them have to make a trip. So if y'all find up, think you're gonna have questions, or you get citizens' questions that you need to ask, please let me know in advance, and we'll make sure they're here for the second reading. If not, they'd be here at the third reading to address those questions, but maybe a little late at that time. All right, next item is Resolution 2017-19, approving a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk, if you could read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmel, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution 2017-19, a resolution to grant a conditional use permit to Kitty College Pre-K School to locate a daycare center in a PCD zoning district.
Okay, I just noticed that the agenda's wrong, I think, it says for faith church, so.
That's the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all right, so this is the, no, that's fine, we'd go, we'll go with 19, as it was says. So this is Kitty College, and this came before the Marmel Planning Commission, and they passed a motion to recommend approval of this conditional use permit to the city council. And I should've said that earlier, that that was done on the master street plan amendment also. But, Ms. Shante Tyson is here, is she here?
Yes.
There she is. She's gonna be the operator of the daycare, and it is in the, the building at 501 Millwood, which is where the Kingdom of Destiny Ministries, I believe was the name of the church, that just moved out, out of there. At one time, it was the Senior Wellness Center years ago, but it's where Bradley's Pharmacy used to be at one time. So, does that help everybody? Bradley's Pharmacy, way a long, long time ago. And Ms. Tyson actually had a daycare once in Marmel, and it was in Riverstone Plaza, so she's opening up another one now in Marmel. So, Ms. Tyson, if you want to, just state your name and address for the record, and then tell them a little bit about your plans, so.
Shante Tyson, number 6 Emerald Drive in Marmel. My plan is similar to my plan in 2009, just to develop a childcare center in the area. This would be a little different, based on square footage, my licensing would be 35, 36 My licensing would be 35, 36 children. Similar to Little Scholars was located there before, so we're pretty much operating at the same capacity that they were, so. That is it.
Motion to approve Resolution 2017-19.
Do I have a second, or? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2017-19. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. The vote, was that unanimous for the Planning Commission?
It was unanimous of everybody that was in attendance. There was one absent.
That's all.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, are you going to be occupying the exact same space as the faith church?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Why don't we use it?
Yes, sir, he would be using, yes, we would be partnering, yes. He would be using it on Sundays and Wednesdays, and I would be using it for the remainder of the week. You're welcome.
Okay, if there's not any more discussion or questions on this item, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2017-19, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Tyson.
Thank you.
And welcome back to business in Mammell. Next item is Resolution Number 2017-20, approving a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaskett County, Arkansas, Resolution 2017-20. A resolution to grant a conditional use permit to the Faith Church of Mammell to locate a church in a PCD zoning district.
Okay, and as you heard, this, this church would be operating at exactly the same address. It would be there on Sundays and Wednesdays. And Mr. Charles Helms, is that, yes, sir, is in the audience? He's the pastor of the faith church, so he's here to answer any questions, or tell you a little bit about his church, if you would like to hear from him. Good, how are you? State your name and address for the record.
First name Charles, last name Helms, address 8327 Count Massey Road, here in Mammell.
And tell them a little bit about your congregation. I know they mentioned something at the Planning Commission, so.
At this present moment, we kind of start off with three members. We're up to about 15 members. We've got some young, energetic, innovative thinkers that really want to get involved in the communities. You know, I've coached football for the past four years. My son goes to North Little Rock High as well. But just really want to get in the community, impact the community, work with other local churches. I've kind of reached out to some other churches before we ever launched in North, we were, we're actually here in Mammell, but we're on the North Little Rock end. So we had to make some changes, some relocating. So just want to really get involved, maybe even partner with you guys, and try to find out what we could do to make a better fit in the community, and just kind of really help out. I had one individual reach out to me already about, we handed out some You're Invited cards during some outreach. Lady reached out to me, she had a major concern about children getting caught up with drug dealers. So we definitely don't want our children getting caught up with that. We just want to really get involved and see if we can kind of build families and build our communities up, so.
Thank you, Mr. Helms.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Helms? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
To approve Resolution Number 2017-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-20. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution 2017-21, amending the 2017 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaskett County, Arkansas, Resolution 2017-21. A resolution to amend the 2017 general fund budget.
Okay. Basically, we're bringing this before the council because there, since the 20th of March of this year, there have been 10 sightings or attacks by coyotes within areas of Mammell. And so I've met with the, well, I met with the, I don't even know the right word, but anyway, the affected people that the attacks occurred on some people. So the daughter of one of the pet owners came to see me. And then I guess the daughter of the couple also came to see me. So there's two daughters involved in this, but it was because their parents' animals had been killed. And so, and I'm sure that Victoria's, it was her pet also, but, so I've got cards from them, they want to speak tonight, but they came to me and, can we do something and address this? I will tell you that in 2010, we trapped coyotes at that time, and I don't know the exact reason why we trapped. I've not been able to figure that out, whether we had attacks at that time. I don't remember any attacks at that time. But in 2010, it was December of 2010, we trapped three coyotes. One off Orleans Drive, and two off of Odom South is where they were trapped at this time, at that time. At this time, one of the attacks occurred in Country Club of Arkansas, and the other attack occurred on Riverwood, which is right down the road from two of our council members. But the, so after the two attacks, we've met, and basically, there's, there's no way of knowing that we will catch the animals that attacked the dogs, but we don't know what else to do. I've talked to our animal control personnel, and, and that's what North Rock recommends. And there's even an email I've got from the Game and Fish, saying they can't ask us to trap them, they won't ask us to trap them, they don't deal with nuisance animals like this. But they suggest the council members, or the citizens, contact their council members and say, you need to get them to trap. So, and they would even provide names of agencies to do that. And so, because I've read other things saying you don't want to trap, you don't want to remove them, because then they'll start thinking their population is decreasing, and so then they'll counteract that. So the coyotes could be breeding more to create a greater population. So there's two things of thoughts on that. But what we've done is we've asked for some money here to go in the budget to allow us to hire a service to come out and trap coyotes. The goal would be to do it for 14 days initially and see what that has. Do you want to hear from the comment cards first? Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear from them, but in.
Okay, Councilmember Saunders?
This whole issue, after they trap them, what are they going to do with them? They have a range of about 40 miles. Well, yeah, but you know, that creates other problems too, just like the mayor was saying.
Ma'am, you can't speak from the, you can't speak from the, if you don't speak, you need to fill out a card. The, they, I mean, and I agree with that. I mean, if you're going to trap them, relocating them is just moving a problem somewhere else. I agree with that. So the goal would be is that they would probably be euthanized.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll let you, I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah, I, you know, if you, and they have a range of 40 miles, that's correct. So you'd have to move them 100 miles away, and that's pretty expensive and all, so. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So did I hear you write that you did consult with Game and Fish?
I did not consult with Game and Fish. I got an email that was forwarded to me from the Game and Fish, that went to a citizen.
I just wondered if, you know, we've got these kind of opposing theories on how to mitigate their population. Is there more resources that we need to do on this? Or is this, this is going to get the ball rolling? Does the 30, the $3,200 will help us to kind of be proactive and on top of this?
Well, I, I mean, I've lived here 20 years. I've seen coyotes here the entire 20 years I've lived here. But they've not ever, to the best of my knowledge, attacked pets like this before. I do not remember any instance of that occurring. Now, maybe it did, but I didn't, it wasn't, I didn't hear about it, or something like that. But it's, and, you know, North Rock traps, I will say that. When they have a problem area, the city of North Rock, they trap.
Are these live traps?
Yes, they are live traps.
Well, if somebody stray dog gets in there, they can?
Yeah.
Yes. They're not a trap that's going to kill them. Now, they've got to regularly check the traps, and, yeah, in this time of year especially.
Love to hear from them.
Okay, all right. All right, we've got three comment cards now regarding this issue, so Ms. Mary Ellen Ware? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ellen Ware, 44 Norfolk Drive. My father's dog was killed on Riverwood Cove, and he's almost 88 years old. This is his companion, it totally devastated him. My real concern is, and after talking to the next comment card, Victoria, there's already been two attacks, two animals killed. What happens if my little grandson, who lives on Turtle Creek, wanders outside at 8:00 at night? Is he going to be attacked? My elderly father walks down the steps to take care of his pets at night if he falls and can't get up. Is he going to be attacked? Or I'm worried that, what is the next step? There's been, I put this out on the Mammell Next Door site, I got more than 40 replies. There's been several sightings. So if there's that many sightings, there's probably that many more. And so, and then my comment on, you know, if you remove them and destroy them, the more will come in. And I mentioned this to the mayor, and thank you for meeting with me last week. This might need to be a seasonal thing, where we regularly check on this in a budget item every year. But thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I was just going to ask where about your father's dog, and was he in the front yard, backyard, or was?
He's in the backyard. He lives along the river. And my dad has a, it's kind of an opaque fence along the river. And then there's an electric fence, but there's a separate little hot tub house that he keeps his pets in, and there's a doggy door. The dog got lured out during the night. And my dad, like I said, he's almost 88 years old. He gets up probably 5:00 in the morning, goes outside, calls for the dog, and the dog didn't come, and went down there, and he called me. My mother's been gone almost 10 years, and I've never seen my dad so destroyed. I thought this might, and he's cognitively with it and, and healthy, but I thought, this is going to be the turning point for my poor dad, so this is his companion all day long. But I mean, like I said, he's a pet, that was a pet. I'm worried about my grandchildren and my, and my father, so, you know, this, it seems like this is getting out of control. And I know we live in a rural, but it's still an urban city, so we've got to, my feeling is we've got to do something.
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
Is there a question for Ms. Ware?
Do you know, did he see the coyote, or was there enough evidence?
No, it had, the pug was spoiled pug, he weighed almost 30 pounds, so it had to be a big animal. And my guess, it was, I'm guessing it was coyotes. I saw the dog. It was totally gutted in the yard and just laying there. So, I mean, it was, he's, he wasn't a little bitty pug, he was a good 30-pounder. Spoiled dog.
He lives right down the street from Mr. Saunders.
Yeah. Well, you probably saw us out the next week, chasing the new dog around. He got away from us.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I know your dad, and I'm sorry that happened.
Yeah, it just totally tore him up, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I wouldn't wear that, but that's what a sign of a coyote attack is removing the intestines, so.
Is that right?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I've, I've learned a few things too, so. All right, the next comment card I have is from Ms. Victoria Fender.
Victoria Fender, 105 Grenoble Circle. So, I, sorry. So I've done a little research here recently. I'm actually the one who drafted the Facebook post that the city put out, as well as the post that was put on the website and the animal shelters website. I helped the mayor draft that, and it went through some other people before it was posted. That was after our first meeting, and there was, it was an isolated attack at that point in time. One of my dogs, Sylvia, was killed. She was dragged off into the woods and was gutted there. To my knowledge, from my stepdad's vision himself, she was, the intestines were removed. We have her collar now, and, you know, it's gross and bloody, but we have it. Our other dog, Datsun, was also attacked, and it was confirmed to us after we took him to, he was attacked at the same point in time. And we took him to the vet, and they confirmed that the bite marks were consistent with the size of a coyote's. So we can guarantee you that our attack was a coyote. The following night after our attack as well, we did see a coyote. And recently, one of the attacks that was reported to the mayor was by one of our, by one of our family friends, and he was jogging past our road. And we live on a golf course, so here's the golf course, and here's the golf course on the other side of the road, and the country club goes down the middle. And he was jogging down the road and saw the coyote go from one end to the other. So we're very aware that that coyote is frequenting our area, and we don't let our dogs outside at night anymore. Unfortunately for us, you know, we learned a little bit too late, but my goal with the Facebook post was to educate more people with that. From that post, I'm just going to read to you a couple of comments from some people that posted on that, responded to it. So Connie Bennett said that we were walking around Mammell Valley this morning, and a coyote was about 30 yards away, and he was not frightened by us. And this was during daylight hours. So that, to me, is more concerning, not because of, we're not just talking about dogs anymore. You know, we're talking about, our kids are out in the backyard, and they're playing, and there's coyotes there, and they're not afraid of that noise, they're not afraid of our presence, and that's a problem. The mayor also mentioned that, you know, there's been coyotes here for years. Of course, you know, we live on wetlands, and that's obviously, you know, we should expect that. And Ms. Mary Ellen, her, her father's pug that lives in the backyard, you know, he's got that electric fence, and he goes outside, this is his fourth, third, that was the third. Third pug. So this is his third pug, and the pug's always lived outside. But it's just now getting attacked by a coyote. So something has changed, okay? So that's where I think the rest of us are coming from, is that, you know, these coyotes, yes, they've been here for years, but they haven't been aggressive. And like the mayor mentioned, you know, last time, to the best of his knowledge, there were no attacks. Well, the city set a precedent, right? We, the city appointed, or appropriated $3,000 or so to trap coyotes with no attacks. And here we are, with 10 sightings, and then I've got here listed five more, and Ms. Mary Ellen has also four that were mentioned on her post. Obviously, we don't know if those were reported or not. But that's, that's a lot of sightings. So we've got a lot of sightings where, at where we were last time. And we also have two, two dogs killed in two months, and one that was attacked but not killed. So to me, that's a problem. That's personally why I would like to see the coyotes trapped. Some research that I did myself, as the mayor did, if you do some research, you'll find out that a lot of cities find that when they trap coyotes in one area, they return within six to seven years. Well, the last time we trapped was in 2010. So here we are, seven years later, and we have a lot more attacks, or we have a lot more sightings, and we have a lot, we've got attacks this time. So that's where the change is happening. So something's gone. Also, a little backstory, my dog, Datsun, who was the one that was attacked but not killed, he was attacked by a coyote seven years ago, before the city trapped the coyotes the first time. It's honestly, truly amazing that he got away twice. If any of you know anything about coyotes, it's just about, like, once the dog has been, or once they grab something, it's over, that's it. Because they grab and they shake, and that kills it. But so both times, he had bites around his abdomen instead of around his neck, so somehow the little sucker got away. So we're lucky to have him still. Something, other things that I want to bring to the council's attention are some attacks that have happened in other city, or other cities and states around us. So in Montebello Park in California, there was a teen girl that was sitting under a gazebo, and a coyote came up to her in daylight, broad hours, and took off with her shoe. Tried to take off with her, but ended up with a shoe. A man was working under his car in the same area a few days later after that coyote was trapped. And the, he was working under his car in his front yard, and the coyote came up and tried to take off with his leg. He ended up with six puncture wounds in his leg. And then in the same area, but a year later, there was a homeless man that was rummaging through some trash. He ended up with 19 puncture wounds all over his legs. Also in California, but this one in Irving, was a three-year-old that was walking with her parents, was bit on the back of her neck. So she was walking down the street with her parent, and a coyote came up to her and tried to take off with her, bit her on the back of the neck. In the same city, there was a seven-year-old that was scratched on the knee in her garage. She was playing with toys in her garage. The coyote came into her garage and tried to attack her. Stillwater, Oklahoma, this was in May of 2017, there was an eight-year-old that was attacked in her backyard with a fence. So this is the commonality that someone probably later will point out to you, is that both me and Ms. Mary Ellen both have invisible fences in our yard. And I spoke to Officer Spurlock with, he's the head of Plaskett. And I spoke to Officer Spurlock with, he's the head of Plaski County.
He's a wildlife officer.
Yes, thank you. And he mentioned to me that even a fence will not deter a coyote. So, and that's a problem, because especially for those who live on a golf course, which he also told me is where they frequent the most, because it's a straight shot. They can just go from one end to the other, and whatever they see along the way, they just go after. We're required to have four-foot wrought iron fences. And in that case, it's absolutely not going to deter a coyote, because they can jump four feet, for one. And two, they can see directly through the fence. So in that case, they can see exactly what they're jumping into. And they're very keen animals. They're not going to jump into something, you know, that they're not aware of. So there's that. And there's also that, you know, in other cities around, or in other states around us, there's also some in Texas here I have, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. But there are a lot of attacks on humans, and it's the same thing that we saw with, what's her name? With Connie, where they're out in the daytime, and they're not afraid of citizens. They're not afraid of people's presence, and that's a problem. And so we're starting to see here is that something is changing with these coyotes. The mayor himself mentioned that it's possible that, you know, all this new development, there's no, you know, we're killing habitats, right? So the rabbits and things like that, that they would usually hunt, they're no longer there. So they're now seeking other food sources. And again, that's a problem. So if we're, you know, taking away their food source, then we're creating the problems for ourselves. And so I strongly advise the council to appropriate this money, mostly for the fact that you already set a precedent, you know, ten, seven years ago, that with no attacks, you appropriate, actually, back up, sorry, it didn't even go to the council last time. Last time, the mayor told me that the Animal Control and the Public Works Director worked together and took care of this without even needing to go to the council. But here we are in the same situation with two attacks instead of none, and we're having to ask you for the money. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fender. Let me point out one thing. I went back to look to see why we didn't have to come to the council last time. We used to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for beaver control and, and water control. And now we only appropriate eighty-five hundred dollars, and we pay eighty-two hundred and forty-six dollars a year for that service. So we used to appropriate more money, so we had funds in the Animal Control account to do the trapping the last time, which we don't this time. Councilmember Mosley?
I just wanted to say I appreciate your, and admire your tenacity and your thoroughness. You've done a, from the time you and I first visited a month or two ago, you've, you've done a good job of taking something that we didn't know was a problem and have investigated and made contact with other people, and you're presenting a good case.
Thank you.
You've done good.
Thank you.
Are you in law school?
I'm actually a dance major at U L R. I'm just involved.
I told her she needed to go to law school.
You tried to get me to run for alderman.
Run for office.
And I will tell you, I was impressed with Ms. Fender. When I met with her, I thought I was gonna meet with someone a lot more mature. I will just say that.
Not that that's a bad.
No, it's not bad. No, I just, I was surprised when she told me she'd just graduated high school. So, are there, if there's any, not any other questions for Ms. Fender? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last card I have is from Ms. Benny Owens. State your name and address for the record, please.
Forty-six Norfolk Drive, Benny Owens. And basically, we, I've been here before we were in a city. And we're a town of ordinances, laws. That's why I've stayed here. I love it. I like that we put our trash out. We can't leave the trash can out. We gotta take it back in. We have a vicious animal ordinance. I don't know if you're aware of that. Dogs, if they attack another dog, it's a vicious animal. A coyote is a wild dog. So if we can't let dogs run loose, and we can't let them be vicious, why is a wild dog excluded? You have to think about that one. I have, in the past, what we used to do for the trapper, we would call in, and then they would map the sightings. Like, people would say, I saw it. I've had them in my backyard. I live on the river. Only one, though. There was a pack. And I called first, I think in March, and I said, ooh, about five-thirty, I heard a coyote howling right behind my house. And I have a small Pomeranian. I have a fence, but they can dig under too. Don't, don't think they can't. I have decking, so what they'll do is dig under the decking, just like a dog. They'll try to get loose. So they, I called one, long ago, there was a coyote in my backyard, and, you know, you go, shoot, get out of here. And they took off. And I called Animal Control, told them, and they said, oh, we'll plot it. But they asked me, and I didn't have a dog at that time, were there yappy dogs around? I said, yes, my neighbor has two Maltese. And they said, well, they're wanting your neighbor's dogs. And so I was very vigilant and, you know, anytime I hear a coyote. But two thousand and ten was really the last time. We had, I had two in my backyard. One had a broken tail, and he was digging in my garden, and they're looking for food. That's why they're attacking other animals. They're hungry. I think it was June, I called Rita, and this was the noon siren. And all of a sudden, they can't stop themselves. They start yipping and howling. I don't know if you guys have ever heard them. And it wasn't just one this time. It was like several. And so I called her, and I said, ooh, somebody may have had babies, I don't know, but a coyote pack is much more dangerous than just one coyote. Because think about me. I weigh a hundred and six pounds and five-two. I go in my backyard. My dog, they will come up. They don't care if a person is there. If they want your dog, they will try to snatch it and take off. What are you gonna do? My dog is like a kid to me. Of course I'm gonna fight, and of course I'm gonna get maimed in the process. We can't allow a city with, you know, the bear came down. I don't know if anybody remembers when we had a bear in Rolling Oaks long ago. We didn't let it stay. He had to go. So coyotes, either they have to be nice, and they're not being nice, or they gotta go. So we really need to appropriate the money, and maybe wait, maybe it'll be a seven-year period, and then we think about it again. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Arm of Vaperson?
Motion to approve Resolution Number twenty seventeen dash twenty-one.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-one. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. We will have Animal Control contract, contact and contract a trapper. Take care of this. Try to take care of it. I mean, there's no guarantee we catch anything, but we'll have to trap to try. So, or try to trap, or whatever.
Have to try.
Okay. Next item is promote, proposed interchange update is requested by Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Mosley had sent me nine questions, and then followed it up with a tenth, or this last week, later last week. And so basically, I know, I hate to read some, but I guess the best way to do it is just to read these, read the questions, and then read the answers. It's only three pages, so it shouldn't take long. Councilmember Mosley requested an update on the proposed interchange. He provided a list of questions. I've answered those questions received in the text below. I will attempt to answer any other questions that other councilmembers may have tonight. However, I cannot guarantee that I will have all the answers I made to get back to you. First question is, how are the funding components that were discussed last year coming together? The estimated construction cost of the interchange, based on the sixty percent design in July of two thousand and seventeen, is two, is twelve-point-two million dollars. This cost includes a five percent contingency for construction, but it does not include any costs for right-of-way acquisitions, construction administration, or inspections. Our current street fund reserves, currently at three-point-eight million, could cover a twenty percent match of two-point-eight million, which is a typical eighty-twenty project. Eighty percent federal, twenty percent local match. In addition, general fund reserves, currently at five-point-eight million, could be used to supplement funds if the council chose to use those funds for interchange purposes. I do not think this project will be an eighty-twenty, meaning eighty percent federal, twenty percent local. It's more likely to be a fifty, fifty project, fifty percent federal and fifty percent local funds. However, if it was a sixty-forty project with federal funds providing the forty, it could help move the project forward sooner, since this project would benefit Maumell, North Rock, Plaski County, and property owners in the area. The fifty percent or sixty percent match could be divided up in various splits between all these entities. One scenario could be the city of Maumell with a twenty to twenty-three percent share, the city of North Rock with a ten to thirteen percent share, Plaski County with a ten to thirteen percent share, and private landowners with a ten to thirteen percent share. If one group did not participate, it would add three-point-three-three to four-point-three-three percent to each of the other entities. I had a conversation with Judge Hyde regarding their commitment, and he indicated that Judge Valance had committed a million dollars toward the project. However, Judge Valance played, paid for the initial design of the roadway of Counts Massey using a portion of those funds. Judge Hyde will determine how much of those funds remain for construction costs. I had a meeting with Arkansas Highway and Transportation Director, which that was their name at the time. They're now called the Arkansas Department of Transportation, Director Mr. Scott Bennett on July the twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Starting in October, two thousand and seventeen, AR DOT will be planning construction projects for two thousand and twenty-one. These plans will be based on current funding levels, since they have already allocated expected funds for projects in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and two thousand and twenty. If other funding sources become available to fund highway construction, such as a federal infrastructure plan or an additional state highway or fuel tax, our proposed interchange project might be a consideration for an additional funding source, but there are no guarantees. So therefore, this, right now, the Highway Department has no money to commit to this until at least two thousand and twenty-one. Is there still some possibility of refinancing in regard to the six-point-six mills that we used for the recent bond projects to address any shortfall in the city's share of costs? As stated in the previous update in June of two thousand and sixteen, any refinancing of the two thousand and fifteen bonds could be subject to an optional redemption after March one, two thousand and twenty-two. This would allow for refinancing, but it would require a vote of the citizens to fund the project. When is scheduled completion of Counts Massey Extension? We have experienced some weather delays and delays in right-of-way acquisition, but the Counts Massey Extension is scheduled for completion by the end of August, two thousand and seventeen. Last year, I'd stated a completion date of twenty, of July, two thousand and seventeen. The section of roadway within North Rock and adjacent to the Diamond Center complex was bid on July the eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, with the pre-construction meeting scheduled for August sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. We anticipate the completion of construction in late two thousand and seventeen or early two thousand and eighteen, weather permitting. Central Arkansas Water is also working in the area, immediate area, installing a thirty-inch water transmission line. So utility work in the right-of-way of Counts Massey may continue past the August, two thousand and seventeen completion date. We will also be extending sewer and water lines to the area from the existing mains, which were installed recently, and that construction will extend to the end of two thousand and seventeen, end of the year, two thousand and seventeen. How's the twenty-two-month design phase coming along? The engineers at the sixty percent design point of the project as of today. The original schedule was for this milestone to be completed in mid-May, so we're approximately two months behind on the design schedule. If we stay on schedule from this point forward and get timely reviews, final plans should be completed in January, February of two thousand and eighteen. This is the sixty percent plans for the interchange. It's a hundred and forty-three pages long. So that's what they've been working on. We've done thirty percent. Now they've done sixty. We'll have turned in ninety percent plans also. So those are at the Highway Department right now for review. What are the political considerations in getting construction started on the interchange, interchange after design is complete and funding lined up? I'm not sure what you mean by political considerations, but I want to start construction on the interchange as soon as we have approval to go to construction and to have a funding source or sources in place. The Highway Department would handle the bidding and construction administration for the project, so it would have to be placed in their bid-lating schedule after the funds are in place. Number six, are we still on course to begin again construction in two thousand and eighteen? The design should be complete, but as you can see from the discussion under question one, I do not think that we will have federal funding available at that time. Seven, could you provide an updated version of the approximately eighty-step checklist of the process that you have provided at various points in the past? The engineers are currently working on steps fifty-four through fifty-nine, with the sixty percent submittal being sent to the Arkansas Department of Transportation on August third, two thousand and thirteen. And included in your packet is the six, is the task list, and so you can see what items fifty-four through fifty-nine are. And basically, it actually should be, yeah, fifty-four through fifty-nine. So we completed that, and sixty was turned in. So that's being reviewed right now by the Arkansas Department of Transportation. How are the political changes in Washington affecting the process? I'm not aware of any political change in Washington, DC that will greatly affect the interchange construction, unless the federal government goes back to earmarks or significantly increases funding to states for highway projects such as the infrastructure program. Any other developments we need to be aware of? A possible funding source would be a sales tax to pay for the construction of the roadway. If the sales tax vote passed, a bond could be issued to cover the cost of the interchange, and the tax could be designated to sunset or end after the bonds were paid off. If the tax were pa, if the tax passed was a half-cent sales tax, it would, it would sunset when the bonds were paid off, or in approximately fifteen years. It could be sooner if the sales tax proceeds increased during that time due to retail development, which could occur in the area of the interchange. If the council chooses to use sales tax to pay for the construction, I recommend that a sales tax election be held in two thousand and eighteen. The earlier the better, to allow the citizens to make the decision whether we proceed on the project sooner rather than later. On Wednesday, August the second, two thousand and seventeen, Councilmember Mosley sent an additional question. The additional question and answer is below. Is there any leftover funding from the Counts Massey Extension? If there is any, if there is leftover funding from the Counts Massey Extension project, can it be used to fund the proposed roundabout that would connect Country Club Boulevard to Counts Massey? Based on the very specific language in the ballot question that is included below, it is my opinion and Bond Council's opinion that any additional funds from the two thousand and thirteen bond issue could not be used to construct a roundabout that would connect Country Club Parkway to Counts Massey. The proposed roundabout was not on the master street plan at the time the election was held. In the sheet that's here, I've included question number two that was on the ballot, and specifically wording that I've highlighted says, finance a portion of the cost to design, engineer, improve, construct, acquire, and repair the existing Counts Massey Road, resurface and widen a portion of the street within Maumell City limits to the current master street plan standards. So that's according to my interpretation and Bond Council's interpretation, it couldn't be used for that, because it wasn't part of the master street plan at that time. And the language is very specific on these bond issues, so that's why you can't use money from one to help with another and that sort of thing. So, so that's the update. Councilmember Vaperson?
Just wanted to say whatever we need to do to expedite us from having to wait till two thousand and twenty-one, if we went to the, you know, whether it's get together with talks with North Little Rock and Plaski County and say, what are we gonna do about this, rather than us wait four years to find out if we're gonna get any funding? What do we need to do to be proactive? And like you said, the city's sales tax. But we need to, we need to.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, and I don't think you can do a combination of both. I think you're gonna do the sales tax, or we need to
Yes.
Put a plan together and then wait till two thousand and twenty-one and get commitments from North Rock and the county.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Councilmember Mosley?
Is that, is that how I understand what you were talking about? Is that we can't, we can't start construction in two thousand and eighteen because we need to have financing lined up? And, and you're saying that the State Highway Department has already committed all their financing up through?
Well, not financing, but they've committed all their funds up through, based on what their current amount that they get every year.
Okay, so, so if they were doing an eighty-twenty with us, or a fifty-fifty, or whatever, those funds will not be available till two thousand and twenty-two? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yep.
Did we know that before? Because I...
It's 2021.
I think we were kind of roaring along, thinking we could probably go that route and start.
Well, it's, I mean, that's a little bit news to me, but it's 2021, not 2022.
Okay.
Okay, but the next three years are planned out, yes, on their projects. And it's partly because I think they thought they were going to get some more money through the legislature, through, you know, taking it to the vote of the people or whatever, so.
At what, at what point can we say, "All right, we're ready to get in line"? Because right now, they're not considering us to get in line, or can they this year?
Well, when we get the plans completed, we can get in line.
Can we get in line this October?
Uh, January, February.
January or February?
Yeah.
Okay. And so they, they could get us in line for 2021 at that point?
They could, yes.
Okay.
Possibly. I mean, that's, that's what I'll, I'll try to do that, but we also got to come up with the other funding, too. And they're not going to do an 80-20 project, I can tell you that.
And that's my, my question, too, is when, when will we know what match it is, 80-20 or whatever?
It won't be 80-20. Because we went, the city of Mall Mel went to DC and got this money outside the Highway Department. We were never part of their program when this design started in 2005 or '04 or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll find out if it's 50-50 or whatever when?
When the plans are complete now, but there's no commitment to that. I mean, that's, that's what, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know whether, I mean, it's what we can come up with. So, I mean...
If we want to finance the whole thing?
Well, here's the deal. I, I mean, I can go to the, the director and say, "All right, we want to go 50-50 with you in 2021." It still takes commission approval of that. So the Highway Commission's got to approve that. So I can't guarantee you, if I work a deal with the director, that the commission is going to support that.
Okay.
But, you know, there, you know, but there, there are possibilities. I mean, I'm hearing rumors that there's going to be a special session and that, you know, there might be some funds, you know, or they'll put it to a vote of the people next year on a sales tax, you know, or highway tax, let's call it that, not a sales tax, a highway tax. But this was never on the Highway Department's funding program, ever. Because this is not their project. This was the city of Mall Mel's project.
Okay. You know, we've talked about the 50-50 over and over so much that I thought that was the direction it was going.
Well, and that was what I was trying to do, and, but, but it seems like it's just getting harder to get that.
Now, if we had, if we still had some capacity in that 6.6 mills, which we don't...
Cannot be used.
Because we basically are up to our eyeballs in debt, is that...
Well, no. It's because you cannot refinance for seven years. That's, we, we made a guarantee to the bondholders that they could hold those bonds for seven years.
Okay.
So it has nothing to do with being up to eyeballs in debt.
Okay, okay. And then at that time, we would have to go ahead and get a, an election to, to do like we did before?
Yeah, and you'd have to pass an election then to refinance and to do any projects that you want to do.
Or if we want to start a new bond, then we would do a new tax. Correct?
Well, you couldn't use, you couldn't use the 6.6 mills to do that. Yes, yes.
What I'm trying to do is figure out, you know, how to do this without doing a tax increase.
Not going to happen.
There's no way.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know of a way without it. Not if you want it done in a quicker method.
So what you're saying then is, I guess if we went out and did the whole thing 100% with the tax increase, then we could, we could start doing it right away because we brought in all the money?
As soon as we get the plans completed and approved, yes.
That's what I was going to say. We've got to have the plans approved, plus we've got to get into their bid letting process for construction.
Right.
And how long would that take?
I don't think that'd take long if we had the funding in place. I think you're talking about months rather than a year or something like that. Yeah.
I didn't see a timeline.
Well, and I don't, I don't know that timeline. I mean, because they don't bid every month, they bid on like a...
Right, quarterly basis?
Yeah, it's not quarterly, but it's like every eight weeks or every something week, seven weeks, something like that. And they don't bid a lot during the winter months, you know? So, yeah.
I've got a couple more questions, but you go ahead, Ken. Go right ahead.
Okay.
Well, Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, okay.
I just, I just wanted to make something clear to everybody, especially the audience. We're not up to our eyeballs in debt in this city. Financially, we're in good shape. Okay?
Very good shape.
So, we do have some bonds, but that's normal. We have a good reserve fund, we've got a healthy general fund. Okay. I just don't want that rumor getting out. I've heard it on Nextdoor Mall Mel, that we're financially bankrupt. We're not.
No, we're the opposite.
Yeah.
Over what we're supposed to have.
We're very healthy.
Okay, we've got two comment cards from people in the audience, so at this time, we'd like to hear from them. Ms. Dinah Nash?
She left.
She left? Okay. Mr. Rick Scott?
I'm Rick Scott. I don't live in your fair community.
State your address, though, please.
10502 Panther Mountain.
Thank you.
I get my mail through the Mall Mel post office. Actually live out in the county. Hear that? County, no annexation. Been following this third entrance you all talking about, and I was, some of the things I hear, you're working at cross purposes, I think, because you're talking about, "Oh, we have too much traffic, we have too many people, we have too many things going away." And by the way, thank you for feeding my coyotes. I want you to know that.
That's very inappropriate, Mr. Scott.
But in effect, what you're doing is, as you build and you lose land and you lose the rabbits, you know, I got coyotes over on my land or adjacent to it, whatever, they start moving out to where they can find it. They try to get my rabbits, and of course they do on occasion, but they go other places. But anyway, we're not talking about that. You guys will work that out, and it'll all settle.
Incredibly insensitive. Incredibly insensitive.
Yeah. Is it really?
My goodness.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, okay. We can talk about stray dogs also, and deer, but anyway. The, the thing about the third entrance is you're going to have more traffic with the third entrance.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend Mr. Scott's time at the podium. Can I do that?
No, let's not do that.
Okay.
He's got three minutes.
He's got three minutes.
Okay.
You're going to have more traffic because you put in a third entrance. You're going to have more development. And the third entrance, I believe, is going to be on North Little Rock's property.
That is not correct.
Whose property is it on right now? County?
It's on a combination of Mr. Freeman's property and a few other people's property. Now, if you're talking within city limits...
Yeah.
The western side will be on the city of Mall Mel, and the eastern side is on Plaski County currently.
Okay. So you've got some of it, but you're not the other. But nevertheless, if you're spending city money, what you're doing is you're spending money that is going to be benefiting North Little Rock. County, North Little Rock, we're probably moving to take over that county area. And that's always a consideration when you're doing these things. So when you're talking about doing this, you may not be working along with what people of Mall Mel have long wanted. They want a small town. They have not wanted to be 100,000 people. And ever so often, you all need to sit down and say, "How many people, how big a city do we really want?" Because that's what you're affecting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. All right. Are there any other council member questions on the interchange update? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I've got a couple here. Just on the 80-step process, is everything before step number 54 already signed off? I've got several projects for 54.
Yes, sir. We, we have approval for the 30% plans. So yes. So everything, even the, the 56 is done. 55 and 54 were in process when I wrote the memo.
All righty.
57 has been submitted. We don't have approval yet. Preliminary bridge design is complete, preliminary roadway design is complete, and the 60% submittal was turned in to the Highway Department. There has not been the formal review yet. They're reviewing it currently. There hadn't been the field inspection by the Highway Department.
All right. Let me, let me make sure I understand on the Council Massy Extension, I've seen a couple of folks in the audience that live out that way. The, okay, is, is the whole section, including the North Little Rock section, that's not going to be finished by the end of August, is that correct?
No, just the extension portion.
Okay, just the extension from the North Little Rock side on, or just the new?
From the North Little Rock side east.
Okay, east, all right. Okay. And, all righty.
The, their Redstone is out there currently putting the final gravel down, and they'll start paving immediately after that, the roadway. Part of it's already paved, but it's a binder course, it's not the surface course.
And the North Little Rock side, they are going to pay for their side, and we're going to be doing that, too. Is that correct?
We're going to share costs proportionally on the portions that are in our city.
And that would be, that would be completed maybe in early 2018?
Early 2018. And that, the, we've got a pre-construction meeting with the contractor scheduled for next week on that. So talked to the city engineer, Mr. Wilburn, this morning talking about that, so.
There are definitely signs of activity out there, that's for sure. I drove out there the other day, and a good thing I was in my Jeep, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't drive a small car out there, yeah.
Oh, it seemed like I had one more, but I'm not sure I said it.
And that's part of what Mr. Todd referred to. Central Arkansas Water is, is in the process of laying the 30-inch water line, so that's down Country Club Parkway, that's on county. They've got up to three crews now. Right now, they're concentrating on the golf course. They've got until September the 5th, I believe it is, to get across the golf course. So they're working on that. But there's crews working along Council Massy at certain times. Now, they weren't there today that I saw out there, and then, but as soon as they get done with the golf course, they'll come back and work on Council Massy. So that work will continue on past August also.
Okay. Let me, let me just ask your opinion on if, if we were able to go ahead, I know we agreed for seven years, but if for some reason they would allow us to do earlier, how much more financing could we add to that? Could we add enough to cover that 12 million interchange?
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
Not tonight.
All righty.
And when would you say? You're talking about financing it, trying to refinance it next year, or?
Just whenever we could. Whenever, in other words, and do that instead of the sales tax.
Yeah, I'll have to check on that.
That's all I've got, I think. Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate your efforts very much. I think that was very informative.
You're welcome. Appreciate the prompting, so I need that every now and then.
Squeaky wheel.
Okay, refinance. I'm writing a note to myself, so I'll make sure. All right. Next item is mayor's comments, and under that, I just put staff announcements. What I want to do tonight is introduce you to our couple of new, well, three new department heads. Basically, Ms. Shannon Vega is sitting on the front up here. She is our new finance director. Ms. Vega has already worked two and a half weeks, three and a half weeks? What is it now?
About two and a half weeks.
Two, about two and a half weeks, so, or two weeks, yeah. So, but she's been here and doing a great job and learning probably more about our finances than she wants to some days. But she's working hard on that, and we welcome her and are glad to have her on board. And then, okay. And Mr. Jared Azon is sitting in the back corner back there. He is our HR director. He started on August, or August, July the 31st. So he's been here a week and a day, so, and I made him attend a council meeting tonight. But Jared is originally from the Memphis-South Haven area, so lives in Little Rock currently and has experience working with the city of South Haven and Germantown, is that...
South Haven, Mississippi, in HR.
Okay.
I have three different cities for other services.
Other services, so, so he, he has municipal experience. And so we're glad to have him on board. And I, I promise you, it hadn't totally gone away from me, but I am glad to have him on board more than anybody else, because it took a lot of duties off of me. And then, sitting beside Mr. Azon is Mr. Mike Hogan, and y'all know Mike. He's trying to hide with a hat on tonight. But Mike has been our interim Public Works Director for a year, and I've removed the interim part. Mike has earned the job as the Public Works Director. He's, he told me he wasn't sure if he wanted it or not, but no, he, he told me that a while back. But he, he's done a good job, and even he and I are both learning on things such as this coyote issue that we've been dealing with. And so we, we learned some things. I mean, because that's the one thing that, yeah, he's the Public Works Director, but he's also over animal control. And so there's, that's, that's a job out there that wears many hats, including sanitation, animal control, streets, and then public works. And so you've got to be someone that's well-versed in a lot of things, and he's doing a great job. Next item is the Planning Commission report, and I get to do that. And I'm going to try to do it real quick, so we're not here any longer than we are. But there was, before the Planning Commission, on July the 27th, there was a request for an amendment to the master street plan, which y'all saw tonight, and they recommended a due pass to the council. They also allowed some variances as part of the access management plan, a part of that same request, and they approved those requests for the variances. One was the separation between Edgewood Drive and where this curb cut was going to be at. And then the other was that they didn't, there's not a decel lane, and they actually had to make a variance, because we're not allowing you to get off there, so they had to make a variance on that. They also approved a request for a variance for the Academics Plus Charter School to erect a fence beyond the front building line. They're going to be putting a fence in their front area to help give it a more secure feeling. There won't be gates currently on the drives, but they're putting a fence all the way around the campus so that they can control entry into the campus. And then you saw two conditional use permits that came before us tonight. Were both coming from the Planning Commission with a recommend for a due pass, and that was the request for the kids' college daycare and for the faith church. And then finally, they also approved a variance request for someone that a swimming pool had encroached one foot into an easement. And so they allowed for that variance request. The permit was issued in 1993, and it wasn't discovered till the house was sold this year, and so that's why it came about. When the permit was issued, the, they didn't draw the pool to scale on the lot, and so that's why it was, it was encroaching into the easement. And so that's all I have regarding the Planning Commission. Next item is city council members' comments. Chairman Vapurzen?
One of the, two quick things. First, thank Ms. Ware and Ms. Fender for their diligence. And Ms. Fender, you can disagree with someone, you can be real, but you don't have to be rude. Got an email and a phone call from Vicki and William Hudgens. We have to do anything about it, but wanted you to be aware of it. Maybe you've heard something similar to this I had not. Regarding Country Club Parkway and Council Massy, shed some light on the driving conditions when taking our daughter to gymnastics. We're willing to ask the companies to help with it, but to summarize, we've had to plug three tires within the last month since our daughter started gymnastics. And they seem to believe that all three of the problems took place on the roadway. And I, I drive there a lot, and I drove specifically over there several times in the past several days after they called. And so I just wanted to make you aware that this is a problem that they had had. I don't know if anybody else had had a problem with it, but I'm sure it's CAW that's over there in the rocks or whatever, but I don't know that...
Sorry. They also are doing construction in the gymnastics
Okay.
complex itself, too.
Okay.
Which she probably didn't, unlike...
I've nev, I don't know that I've heard of a rock causing a puncture wound specifically, not to say that it's...
I would think that'd probably be, yeah, building materials, like nails.
Probably. That, I would not doubt that. But just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I drive that way three and four times a week, and I've not had a problem with a tire, so I don't know. I mean, where I think you have most of the problems, and this is from past experience, is roofing nails and roofing tacks.
You know, you've got a special Mustang with special, very expensive tires on it.
Yeah.
And so whether they're softer, or wider, or flatter, I don't know.
Well, there's a speed rating on some of those cars, and so that means it's got to be a more, you know, stiffer tire and things like that. Vets have to run with speed tires, but, high-speed rated tires. But roofing tacks at landfills are some of the most, do cause you to have more flats than anything, and there's a lot of roof... And there's a lot of roofs being put on in Moll Mel, too. So, I mean, maybe they've got a neighbor that's got a roof recently, and there's, you know, some tacks in their roadway near their house or something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I was going to ask a little bit more detail about the last item in the packet, about rezoning in North Little Rock. If you could shed a little light on that, is, did you put that in there?
I did, well, Ms. Timmons put it in there. She got it in the mail, and I said, "Let's just put it in the council packet." But it's Northwood Creek, which is directly behind the Moll Mel, what's it called, MGC, MGC Kids? So it's right behind what we were just talking about, the gymnastics place. It's Northwood Creek directly behind it. It was, it is rezoning from R4 to R0. So R4 is multifamily, R0 is single-family, zero-lot line construction. So it is a down zoning. So as I understand it, now, I'm not real familiar with North Little Rock zoning rules, but R0 district is intended, single-family, in a medium-density setting. This district permits zero-lot line development in order to achieve the intent of the district. The design of an R0 housing permits a larger usable yard space, even though the lot area is smaller. The R0 district is further designed to provide areas for related recreational and educational facilities, all being protected from direct commercial and industrial activity. And then if you look at their minimum sizes and all that, it allows for a smaller lot area, which is 4,000 minimum square feet, but it says member, minimum number of side yards is one. So since a zero-lot line, you can have only one, you're only required to have one side yard. But their side yard setback is 10-foot, and minimum rear yard is 25, and front yard is 25. I guess it's saying that, yeah, okay, so, yeah, it's 25-foot side yard setback. So it's letting it go from an R4, which is multifamily, that allows, it says, "Single and two-family structures" is what R4 is in there. So I guess those, they're currently, I think duplexes back there. I believe is what those are in a gated community, and they'll be going to single-family on the next phase, I guess.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for that clarification. Couple more just quick comments here. One, I noticed that, I saw an article online about Russellville having trouble funding the aquatic center that they have there. I don't know if anybody's read that, but kind of something that reinforced some of our struggles there a couple of years ago.
I think it's actual construction of it, though, I believe, right?
They were having trouble, they underestimated the utility costs and some things like that. They were having to try to move some money around their budget. But anyway, how's our annual audit going? Is that underway at this point?
It's going to start the middle of September. We had to get back in their schedule, and we wanted Ms. Vega on board before we started, so they'll be here the middle of September
Okay, okay.
to start that.
All right, and have we, and I meant to ask this during the financial thing. Have we bought the fire truck yet? Has it been purchased?
It has been paid for, yes, sir.
It's been paid for, so it's reflected in the-
It's reflected in that, yes, sir. Uh, no, it's not reflected in June's.
And in June's, financials, no.
It should be, it should be in the July financials.
In July.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
It, it has been, but it's not in the financials you looked at. So, yeah, I'm trying, got to get my numbers right here, dates right. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to tell everybody that we, we got our all-inclusive playground committee up and going, and we had a really good meet, first meeting. And our next meeting will be on the 14th. If anybody wants to attend it, of course, it's open to the public. We changed the location. We're going to be at the community center in Philip Rayburn's office. Thank you.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you.
All right, any other council members' comments? Mr. City Attorney? Oh, did I hear something? Okay, Mr. City Attorney?
Finally, I get to talk. We're probably due for a update on the lawsuits. The Martin Wainwright case, which y'all may recall is the individual who is suing, alleging that he got injured in the back of the police car. It's being covered by the Arkansas Municipal League through our municipal vehicle program, which is like the vehicle insurance, for lack of a better term. Jury trials were scheduled in that, were second out on April 2nd, and then first out on August 29th. So if we don't get the first, or the second out date, because the other one goes to trial, we're first out on August 29th of 2018. But that's all being handled by the Municipal League. The, in the Mosley lawsuit, the plaintiff filed a third amended complaint, this time alleging violations of the United States Constitution. As a result of that, I removed it to federal court, and so we're now in federal court in front of Judge Baker, is where we're at. And so that's the update on lawsuits.
Can you explain that?
What?
How it impacts the Constitution?
The original complaint was alleging violations of many things, but due process and equal protection under the Arkansas State Constitution. It's now been broadened to violations of the due process and equal protection clauses of the United States Constitution and a particular article in the Constitution that I don't recall the number of. The factual allegations haven't changed substantially.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Madam City Clerk, comments?
No comments from the clerk's office.
Okay. And then I, the one, the other thing, I was going to bring up the rezoning request, but just make you aware that Bailey Mason finished second place at the World Archery Tournament, and she's from Pine Forest, so, fifth grader, so. Very good for a Moll Mel student to be able to go and finish second in the world, so very good in her age class. There's no other business to come before the council and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Got a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.